Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Ryan Cassoon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Summers, Abson.
Whit.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
The minutes for the common council minutes, October 18th, 2016.
Your motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Massey, second by Ryan Cassoon, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address this council, please step forward.
Okay, hello everybody, my name is Mrs. Linda Madden, and I'm here, well, let's see, the last time I was here, it was about the brook and the stream, and the city getting a grant for the project. My understanding from Mr. Mayfield, who works for the HUD program, the city has received the grant, so now we're wondering what's gonna happen, who's gonna fix it, when it's gonna happen.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Merritt, Warner Lake Avenue. I, uh, I'm gonna play my grouchy old guy card tonight. Um, I'm an old, as I said, I'm an old guy, I witnessed the depression, World War II, and all the conflicts since. Um, the last, by the way, the last time we had unlimited conflict, we ended up with two allies out of it, Japan and Germany. Uh, I've seen good presidents and bad presidents. Um, I respected them all. I'm gonna have a really hard time respecting our current crop. We've got 320 million people in the United States, and these are the best two we can come up with? I don't think so. So, uh, our country's in real trouble if that's true. Another issue, um, the US Constitution is a, in my mind, a magical document. It is intended to be difficult and time-consuming to amend. Um, our freedoms reside in the Bill of Rights, the rest is really just boilerplate. Uh, the, my opinion, the stroke of a pen on an executive order to circumvent any of that is, uh, illegal, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Good evening, Michael Diefenbach, uh, from Highland Avenue, inquiring on the, uh, the status of the, uh, speed abatement efforts, uh, on our street. Uh, I have some comments, but I guess those can wait till you get to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, remarks to department heads, DBW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. Um, we'll update you on, uh, the ongoing capital projects in the city. Uh, we'll start with Sterling Street Phase Two, the construct, the construction is moving very well, and, uh, it's, most of it so far has been in people's back, people's backyards, and there's minimal disruption in there because we're using torrentless technology. However, excavation has to take place, and, uh, for, for connecting the laterals into the sewer lines, and, um, but things are moving very well, we believe, and there are minor complaints, and, uh, the contractor and us, we've been attending to them as soon as they occur. So if there's anything that I'm missing, please let me know, uh, for the people who are being affected by this work. Otherwise, it's really a very difficult project, but it's moving very well. Amshur drainage, uh, the city water department has finished installing the culverts, replacing the culverts around the railroad tracks, and that project is completed. We have to do some minor regrading for the, uh, swales around the, uh, railroad in that area, in Amshur area. Um, twelve-inch transfer pump that we had since 1980, uh, it has stopped working. Uh, we appreciate the mayor and the common council approval for, to purchase a new one for almost a hundred thousand dollars, so, uh, and we need that to transfer water from different reservoirs to, um, between reservoirs, and especially from Indigo Reservoir, and this new pump will, will be able to serve that purpose. Our, our guys are taking the old pump out, dismantling it, to make room for the new pump to come in, and it is a portable pump, we can move it around to any reservoir that we want. Um, we started damming the Indigo Creek in there, and, uh, just to be, just to be safe, because of the, you know, drought condition that we are in right now, we're hoping for the rain, hopefully we don't have to pump and supplement, supplement our reservoirs with water. Woolworth Building, as you know, there's a nice project is, is taking place in there, the bid opening has been delayed for weeks, so now the bid opening is gonna take place on November 10th for the Woolworth Building, and that will include spare of the, uh, of the Heritage Trail in there. Ninety-nine Wickham Avenue, it's an old house that the city, in a very poor shape, the city has taken over, uh, due non-payment of taxes. We finished the asbestos abatement on ninety-nine Wickham Avenue, and we'll be taking the, uh, that whole house down and leveling the area in there, it's a very small lot, uh, so that DPW will, will be doing that also. Transportation Hub, which is basically the Coach and Short Line USA, that project is moving very well, and, uh, again, that one will include the spare, or spur of the Heritage Trail through it, and the construction is supposed to start early spring, uh, and that's, we're very excited about that. Finally, this project got, got into the front burner because Coach USA, they are the ones who are doing the, uh, uh, construction, they took it over, basically, they hired the engineers and the architects, and now it's really moving full speed ahead, and we're very excited about it. It's gonna be a major boom for that area. The Black Dirt Sewer, that's another sewer line project in there, we're working with EFC in order to push that project forward, for financing it, for funding it, and as you know, just, we got almost a million dollar of grant for that project. So we're working with EFC right now, and Don Paris, which is the finance office, and Richard Gerton, to make sure that all the agreements are proper, and then we'll come to you for approval to proceed. Uh, solid waste transfer station that we have at our wastewater treatment plant, the roof has collapsed on it due to, to snow loading, uh, from some heavy storm, and we are replacing it right now, the construction is moving along, and, um, and it should be done within two weeks, and should have a fabric and a roof on top of it. Leaf pickup has started today, and, uh, the arrangement, it's all on our website, and also we have ads in the paper, and, um, basically, we're starting in the fourth ward, then the first ward, second ward, and finally, the third ward. Once we pick up the city once, then we will go back again. So if we miss you, it's okay, if you're not ready for us and we go by your house, just keep it, you know, almost close to the curb, on your property if possible, and then when you see us coming, you can put it outside. Uh, Sea Construction Project on Dolson Avenue, uh, between City Line by Quick Check and Weedy's Furniture, Old Weedy's Furniture, and all the way up to our wastewater treatment plant by, uh, Chapright Plaza or Campbell Plaza. That work has been completed by CPV, which is basically, uh, installing cooling water for their power plant, and the return line that will be coming to us with the, uh, what's left of that cooling water. And as you know, they will be utilizing our gray water or our, our wastewater treatment plant affluent, in order to cool their generators at the power plant. So that project has been completed, now we're debating whether we should do the paving, they'll be responsible for paving Dolson Avenue in that section from curb to center line of the road, and, uh, we're trying to convince them, or talk, just discussing it with them, to leave it till the spring, or they're looking into, they wanna get done, so they might do it this year. Hopefully, it will be done in the spring. That will involve more interruption to the traffic, obviously milling and paving half of Dolson Avenue at that location. Um, New York Rising, uh, we had a meeting with the committee, and we discussed the status of it, basically, of New York Rising. Right now, the mayor, Richard, Rich Gerton and myself, we're reviewing the agreement. Uh, we're still very much concerned about the high cost of the consultant, and, uh, you know, the mayor is talking to them back and forth, and, uh, I'm not sure if there's, if there is a way out of this, I doubt it, but we, the mayor is trying his best to see if we can listen, lower the price of the consultant so that we can get more construction. Um, and I'm thankful for, for Chief Winner and another, another, uh, New York Rising committee member who met with us, and Alderman Kleiner as well, he came over there to meet with us for that committee meeting. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we generated forty-eight thousand dollars for last month out of septic haulers, again, I keep, every month I keep updating you because that's a great achievement, I just, this is utilizing our infrastructure to generate revenue, to pay our debt for expanding the wastewater treatment plant, and we keep looking for other avenues, revenues, to, to generate from our infrastructure. Tonight before you, you're gonna have, um, a resolution, I hope, to increase the tipping fee for the septic from nine cents per gallon to ten and a half cents per gallon, and, um, you know, the Board of Estimate, Council President, the mayor, and Alderman Massey, they approved it, and I hope you guys will, will approve it. Um, and, um, with that, I will stop my report and see if you have any questions.
Commissioner, two things, one, because I really didn't hear Mrs. Madden's question, I don't know if you answered.
No, I did not, I did not answer her. Yeah.
Sorry, I usually have it on. No?
No, I did not answer her, because I have many other projects in there, that's one of them, I did not, I can answer if.
Can you? Well, I think.
Yes, we did receive a letter from Mr. Mayfield, and I don't know what he said to her, but we don't believe that we got the grant, that is number one. Uh, the letter speaks for itself, and we'll be happy, I'm sure the mayor will be happy to show it to her, um, and there is no even amount of funding that's been approved for, for the grant, and, uh, if that happens, we're, we're, I mean, we are, I mean, the mayor, he's pushing, he's calling Senator Schumer's office, he's calling, uh, Congressman Maloney's office, and, uh, I'm sitting there, listening to them, to try to get this money allocated. And, um, last week, as a matter of fact, we met with Mrs., in the mayor's office, we met with, uh, Mrs. Ingracia, she works for Congressman Maloney's office, for that very reason. She came to the office, and the mayor called her in, and he said, "What are we gonna do in here? We need this money." That's issue number one. Issue number two, we're still working with Army Corps of Engineer about fine-tuning the design. We met with them years ago, they came, they visited the site, they're engineers, they came down from Manhattan, they still have some concerns and some comments, so the engineering is not done yet, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna mislead anybody. So my opinion is, the money is not there yet, but the engineering and the approval from the Army Corps of, Corps of Engineer is not there yet, so we're going, that's, so that's where we are.
Thank you, I do have one other.
Yes, sir.
Mike came up and spoke about Highland Avenue, and I know he's called a number of us, and, uh, is there an update, or is there the possibility at some point to take the least expensive way, and I know I'm probably the only one on this board that thinks that stop signs would be effective, or at least a way of trying it, has there been any more thought of possibly doing that? Or is there an update on the review for the raised sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, that's, obviously, I have to discuss it with the mayor in here, I'm not at liberty right now, uh, to discuss this, uh, in the open, but however, I did share with you, all of the council members, a typical questionnaire that you have to go, when you design these speed humps with, with, with the, what they call them, speed humps, with the, uh, pedestrian crossing included with them, uh, there are lists of questions the designer must go through in there, uh, to answer in the positive, to make it, to make it, to make, to make sure that the solution is appealable, or it's, it's doable. And, uh, you know, that's before you guys, and, uh, I don't know, I don't know if speed, speed humps with the pedestrian crossing is, is the right answer, but that's for you guys to decide, I will give you my opinion when we sit down and talk, I mean, obviously, this is technical discussion, I don't wanna, I don't feel that I should bring it in here, especially when the mayor is not here. Uh, the county, we're getting a grant in there, so that we can have, I mean, we installed, obviously, pedestrian crossing, uh, warning, uh, signs in there that were given to us by the county, I think they are very effective. Uh, the unfortunate thing is, I don't know how, how long they're gonna last, uh, you know, um, there are other things in there that can be done, and I'll be happy to discuss it with you guys. Uh, we're also gonna be experimenting with solar-powered pedestrian crossing flashing light in there, so basically, you can put this flashing light in there when somebody wants to cross in there, you push a button in there, and you will have a flashing lights indicating that, hey, somebody's gonna be crossing for these cars, for these cars to respect the pedestrians who wants, who want to cross, uh, that's gonna be done, it's about seven thousand dollars. Fortunately, we're gonna get a grant from the county to give us this sign, and we're gonna see, if it works out, I think it, it will work out, and, uh, it's gonna alert people, obviously, with the flashing light, and it's solar-powered, and, uh, you know, installation is not gonna be that expensive. If that will work, we'll probably do more of them, but, you know, it's a much, you know, we can discuss, we can get into that much more, in much more details, and much more discussion if you like, at some point.
Al McLeaner?
Commissioner, the downtown revitalization initiative, is that meeting tomorrow, the, the next meeting for the downtown?
I think the mayor is up there regarding, the mayor is up in Albany tonight, that's why you don't see him here, I think because of that, because of that, uh, because of that grant, I'm.
Okay, but this is the second meeting of the committee, which I assume is also a public meeting, and I believe it's tomorrow at seven at Thrall Library, because it's
I am not, I'm not sure, to be honest.
It's the same time as the planning board meeting, so that's.
I really don't know too much about it, honestly, uh, to advise you.
Okay, if anyone's interested, check the, check the website, John, do you know?
I think it's five o'clock at the Thrall Library.
It's at five o'clock?
Five to seven, I thought.
Five to seven, okay.
Yes, it's five, I just put it on the website the other day.
Yeah, so the mayor will be back tomorrow for that time, so probably it will be there then.
Five to seven.
Because he'll be there, he's, he's up in Albany tonight into tomorrow for that, for the ten million dollar project.
Reason, yeah, okay, but for anyone interested in going, look on the website, thank you.
Sorry, I don't have that information.
Alman Johnson.
Yes, far as Hampshire, are we, uh, ready to pave the road yet, far as the carpet?
I think we paved it, yeah.
No, it's not paved yet.
No?
No.
It should have been. We'll make sure.
You had mentioned it had to be settled before you paved it, but it's, it's not done yet.
It's not done yet?
No.
Okay, we'll make sure it's paved done.
Okay, thank you.
Jacob, deconstruction on Wickham Avenue from Orange Rockland, it's gonna be done this year?
Yes, yes, weather permitting, I mean, you know, again, we made a special deal, as you know, with your input with them, to make them responsible for quite a bit of paving that we, we don't talk about in public, but.
We could talk about in public.
No, no, we're not supposed to.
We could.
Okay, all right.
It's Orange Rockland.
Yeah, but it's Orange Rockland that hires them, and they are, and they are working on it, and we want them, we don't, you know, we, we meet with them, as you know, we say we don't wanna have death by a thousand cuts in there, in other words, don't milk this project in there, just finish replacing the cast iron pipe in the ground, which is unsafe, replace it with the plastic pipe, do it all at once, and let's go, just put us out of our misery, so we don't continue to, to, to suffer through it, and that's what they're doing. So within two years, hopefully, they will retire all the cast iron pipe in the city of Middletown, and that's what we've been pushing for.
Okay.
While it's been done, it's painful, I understand, but beats the hell out of death by a thousand cuts.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
Corporation Council?
Good evening, yeah, in my book, Jerry, it's five to seven tomorrow, the DRI. Um, just to report something, Don Paris is not here tonight, but my understanding is we closed on the sale of the, uh, tax liens in bulk to our bulk purchaser, I believe it brought a very hefty sum into the city, which is good, but not all tax liens were sold. So there will be a tax sale on December 10th, Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, right here in the council room, and that will be for the liens that our bulk purchaser did not obtain. Um, what will happen is, the charter requires certain notices to go out to people who owe money, so you may get calls from someone, 'cause I know last year I got some calls before the tax sale, will I lose my house, and I had to explain that, no, what's being sold is the lien on the house, you'll have a period of time to redeem it, at least one year thereafter, uh, but, so you may get some calls from people as those start to go out, and I just wanted to let you know that in advance. If you have any questions about it, or any of your constituents have any questions, certainly refer them to me or to Don Paris, and we'll make sure they get answered. And unless they have any questions, that's it.
Al McLeaner?
I'll ask you now, we have the Frontier approvals on, on the agenda tonight, are your, and it says with your, that we're passing it with your approval, are you?
Right, just about.
You're satisfied that we, that they've really addressed, the Public Service Commission will address any further concerns or threats from Charter and Time Warner?
Yeah, what this will do, and, and I've seen the opposition from Time Warner, which appears to be pretty vanilla, um, but what this will do, if you authorize this tonight, um, again, I'm just making sure that, that, our, our key is that we want them to give us what we're getting from Time Warner, that's really the key. I don't think we can ask more than that, but we can ask at least that, and, uh, that's, that's what I'm seeing so far in the agreement. But I wanted to, to let the process continue to move on, because this way it'll allow them to go to the PSC and get their formal authorization to be able to start offering the service in Middletown, which I think will be a benefit to the citizens of the city, they'll have some, some options that they don't have now. So that's, this just allows the, the process to move forward.
Okay.
In, as a former city official used to say, a positive way.
Thank you.
Rich, does the city have a list of what's available for the auction, before the auction?
There will be, it's not created yet, uh, they're in the process of doing that in the finance office, but there will be a list, 'cause all of those property owners have to get the notices.
Okay.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Uh, city clerk?
On Tuesday's election day, and all the polls in the city of Middletown will be open, if anybody needs to know exactly where they, uh, vote and they live in the city of Middletown, they can call my office at three four six, uh, four one six six, that's all I have for.
Question for John? Thank you, John. Okay, remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Good evening, I have a couple of things, one, I'm gonna go backwards, March of 2017, I wanna get this out there as soon as possible, I know I mentioned it last meeting, we have the firefighter's exam, so anyone that's, knows anyone that's looking to take the firefighter's test, that will be March of 2017, the announcement will probably come out sometime in December, soon as the state allows me to do that. Uh, next council meeting, which is the 15th, at 7:30, prior to the council meeting, we will have a finance committee meeting dealing with the budget. Next Friday, the 11th, is Veterans Day, and the Elks Club always has a ceremony at 11:00 AM up at the Elks Club, so obviously, uh, everyone is welcome, if you get a chance, please come up to it, don't wait till 11 o'clock to get up there, the ceremony actually starts at 11, so by 10:30 would be the right thing. Uh, I promised, uh, Donna at the senior center, they have a craft fair at Mulberry House this Saturday, November 5th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the final thing, we have a resolution tonight for the Blue Star Memorial, and I gave that out to everyone, it, it's a wonderful idea, it's put on by the garden, uh, society, it's a national program, and it's a monument that will be placed in Thrall Park, it won't be placed until next April, but it's a monument recognizing anyone that's ever served in the military, anyone that's serving in the military now, and anyone that may be serving later. There is no cost to the city, so I implore you, please, vote in favor of it, thank you very much.
Alman Burr? Alman Cassoon?
The only thing I have this evening is just a reminder that the Neighborhood Watch meeting, which would normally fall next Tuesday, uh, being that it's election day, at the last meeting, we decided that it would be in our best interest to postpone that, so we will be combining in November, the Neighborhood Watch meeting with the Third Ward meeting, so that will take place on Tuesday, November 22nd, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Alman Johnson?
Thank you. Um, I guess, a few meetings ago, I articulated my frustration at how slowly things sometimes turn, and it was perhaps somewhat misinterpreted as a criticism of City Hall. I'm gonna re-articulate my frustration and disappointment, it has nothing to do with City Hall. Um, as of January, I'll be sitting in this chair for three years, and my fellow older woman has been here for five years, and we've had the same conversation about the brook. Um, it's disrespectful to our residents and their elected officials, we had a press conference a long time ago, the only good thing about the drought is that the brook is dry, um, it's not right, it has nothing to do with City Hall, but whoever is in charge of this process, we're being neglected, and we're being disrespected, and it's not right. On a better note, um, I've also had comments over the years, when we have our new business portion of the meeting, uh, people who attend to watch it or are interested in it have remarked to me, and I'm sure all of us, that there doesn't seem to be a lot of discussion when we have these resolutions presented to us. So I think this is an opportune time to remind anybody who's interested that all of the committee meetings are public, they are not televised necessarily, and they are not recorded for rebroadcast. If anybody's interested in any of these committee meetings, everything is posted on the website, several of them have been alluded to. As an example, tonight, there are several resolutions for public hearings, we'll, you will not hear any discussion about these public hearings, uh, this falls under the jurisdiction of my committee, uh, these committee meetings, for instance, this evening, we met at 7:30, that will result in a resolution and a public hearing, so if anybody's interested in the process, whether it's Board of Estimate, or any of these other committees, you do have access to that, you will not hear about it in these meetings under new resolutions, uh, but it is public, and it's public information. Thank you very much.
Alman Whit?
Thank you, uh, just one thing, uh, the Second Ward Meeting will be held, um, on November 14th at 7:00 right here, uh, we hope to see you, thank you.
Alman Kleiner?
Thank you, you know, the, I think the budget public hearing is Thursday, is that at 6:00 PM?
Yes, correct.
Okay, you'll be here in council chambers, uh, of course, the record headlined at Middletown hikes taxes, well, yeah, but 0.69 percent, and it's, 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 uh, you know, it's way, it's under the 0.69 percent cap, it does not even cover the increase in healthcare costs to the city, so I congratulate the Board of Estimate and Don Paris, and the mayor and Joe for, uh, for this year's budget. If you have any questions, come to the public hearing and voice your concerns, um, if you're listening to this, I don't know why you're not watching the World Series, that's where I'll be shortly. The IDA met this past week, um, and they voted to hire the, um, to support the Business Accelerator, I think that's gonna be a very exciting thing, it's been very successful in New Windsor and other places, so for starting, for helping startup businesses, it's gonna be great with our downtown revitalization initiative, so I, I thank them and congratulate them. Um, I did go stop by Quinn's Pins, they redid the outside of their building to look more like it looked like historically, it's what we're trying to do in Middletown, and they did a lot of work inside, so I think they did a terrific job. Um, and, um, Veterans Day, please come, I haven't seen it listed in the paper yet, it doesn't appear there magically, you've gotta send the information in, but, uh, you know, the 11th month, the 11th day, the 11th hour, at the Elks Club, um, it's a good cause, so please come, thank you.
Alman Johnson.
Yes, good evening, uh, we had a report from the Commissioner about the bus stop signs in the city, uh, the Commissioner met with, uh, County, the bus stop, uh, signs, actually, the project is looking to move forward, once we receive the signs from the County, they'll be installed throughout the city of Middletown and also the town of Warkill. We also heard from the, uh, Board Examiner Plumbers this evening, uh, about the concern, but no specific action was taken at this time, and Commissioner, I would apologize, I think the road was paved, all right?
My apologies needed.
Okay, it was paved, that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Okay, uh, tonight, we, we did, uh, we have a resolution, uh, Rich and Alderman Kleiner have touched on it, the resolution with.
Rich and Alderman Kleiner had touched on it, the resolution with Frontier to proceed this application to the Public Service Commission. Myself and the mayor's office have received phone calls from workers, the union workers, and we hear their concerns. We welcome them. Moving forward, I think it's a win-win for Frontier and the city of Middletown. It gives the residents of city of Middletown to pick another company and it's definitely probably create more jobs for Frontier. So I'm totally in favor of it and I'm glad we're moving forward. New business.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to transfer a total of $13,000 within the Recreation and Parks Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alman Cassoon. Discussion, roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to transfer a total of $13,540 within the Fire Department's 2016 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Humane Society of Port Jervis Deer Park, Inc. for the animal shelter services from January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with BNL for grant application support for the downtown revitalization initiative in the amount of $5,664.73.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize a police escort for the St. Joseph's procession on the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe on Sunday, December 11th, 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Police escort Mr. Massey. Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon to authorize the police department to reassign a 1998 Ford van to the city of Middletown Recreation and Parks Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, November 15th on a proposed lot line change for Heritage Restoration Properties LLC.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, November 15th on a proposed lot line change for Keck Properties LLC.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, November 15th on a proposed lot line change for 14 and 16 Dolson Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $72,852.62 from the general fund balance to cover the cost of repairs for the cost of adding additional cameras to our camera project at 90 North Street and Thrall Park.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to transfer a total of $1,480 within the seniors' 2016 budget for unanticipated contractual costs for the tire replacement and heat on the 2007 senior shuttle.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to amend the city code chapter to increase the septic rate from nine cents to 10.5 cents per gallon as of December 1st, 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the city treasurer to transfer a total of $68,000 within the 2016 budget to cover current overdrafts as well as anticipated expenses through the end of the year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the city treasurer to transfer a total of $68,000 within the 2016 budget to cover current overdrafts as well as anticipated expenses through the end of the year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to approve the application and propose contract to allow Frontier to recede with its application to the New York Public Service Commission subject to Corporation Council approval.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to accept a Blue Star Memorial marker honoring servicemen and women from the Middletown Garden Club to be placed at Thrall Park, which will be at no cost to the city, including for future maintenance.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Audit? Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.